Hey in the back, completing to order. But I do want you to stand and say the pledge of allegiance with us, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lucy, will you do the roll call, please? Ginger Shank, here. He has wires.
Here.
Sarah Jane.
Here.
Frankie Schwartz.
Here.
Jeff Snyder.
Here.
Rich Barton.
Here.
Carolyn Sprab. We have a court.
Excellent. I would entertain a motion to amend or adopt the agenda.
I'm making motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Thank you, Carolyn.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Rich. Motion's been made, segmented to adopt the agenda as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. And we have like a whole pile of recognitions. And I, since I have this huge pile, would like to ask Ginger to come over and help me with it.
Oh.
There are two reasons for that. It's a lot. And the second reason is she knows a lot of these people a lot better than I do because there's some Evan guy in the senior class. I don't know. I thought maybe he would like to help. Yeah, I figured I wouldn't have to, to.
Okay, where do you want people to line up? Is it here or over there?
One over there.
Do you want to, do you want to read them?
I can't, doesn't matter.
Do you want to talk about what we're doing?
Sure, sure.
I didn't, I didn't mean to take that away from you.
Oh, that's all great. First off, thanks for coming. That's great. It's great to see so many people here, so many kids to celebrate and wonderful things they've achieved. Some really, really things to really be proud of. So first thing we have is our all-state recognitions for fall sports. Now, we already did cross-country, so we're not forgetting cross-country, but cross-country we've done earlier. But we have, let's say five students have received all-state honors, which is really an impressive accomplishment. So we should be very proud of yourselves. Parents, congratulations to your kids, all the hard work that they put in to achieve that goal. Those things do not come easy to be the best in the state at something at all, period. So congratulations. So first off, we have Keered Adams from softball. So first-team all-state. You wouldn't mind just hanging out up here. We're going to take a picture with everybody over here in just a second. Then we've got Austin Haas for football.
I love watching you run.
Oh, thank you. It's so exciting, every game. Thank you.
That's great. And then our second-team all-state, we've got Jack Morris. Then Javion Jones, second-team all-state football. And Kayden Schorer, second-team linebacker. All right. These are our all-state athletes from the fall, excluding our cross-country kids, but congratulations. If you guys want to hang out right here, we're going to get a picture. We'll have Ginger and Frankie go over there.
Okay, we'll do it with this group first.
Yeah, we'll do two groups here. Any parents, the press.
Who want to take a picture, yes.
All right, so our next group we have is our academic all-state. So these are our student athletes that have performed to the top academically in the sport. So not only they are varsity-level athlete, but have done really, really well academically. Really, the student athlete is important factor for you, not just athletes, not just students, but combined. Together we get student athletes. So, and so I was looking to do a little research on what it takes to become academic all-state. Well, it varies from every sport. So I'm not going to get into each sport because there's a lot of details, but essentially you have to be the top academically, GPA, class rank, ACT scores, that sort of thing. And then also have to meet the playing time requirements. So it's so proud to see so many of our great kids that are on this list. This is a long list and it's something that everybody should be very, very proud of. So thanks for your hard work academically and on the field. So it's been fun watching you all play. So let's go, oh, thanks, I lost my microphone. Thank you, Carolyn. All right, so I'm just going to call everybody up and we'll kind of do the same thing over here. We'll kind of come up here, get your certificate, and we'll have a picture over there behind Dr. Ross. So we've got Keegan Balagrad for football. All right, Keegan. Jack Morris. Dietrich Forrest, is Dietrich here? Nope, no Dietrich. Kayden Schorer. All right, Kayden. Chance Classic.
Placing.
Placing, sorry, placing. For Penn Ellen, it's hard to say, you know, like, things with. Tyler Farber. Craigon Guthrie. Evan Shank. Austin Haas. Then Alex Wilson. That's the football team. All right, so moving on to cross-country, we have Alex Ralph. Oh, I'm sorry, Alexis Ralph. Okay, Ralph, Alexis, Alexis, nope. Noah Klein. Avery Shaw.
Avery.
Isabella Lombardo. Nope, okay. Grace Rudiger. All right. Moving on to softball, Morgan Marshall. Gracelyn Sitten. Austin Williams. Hannah Gibson. And Lenny Miller. All right. Come on up there, everybody. You want to get a picture. All right, gang, let's see if we can get everybody. We'll have, Kelly, you want to direct everyone?
Thanks, Ginger. You're welcome.
Thank you, your famous speech.
That's right. Okay, well, you guys are absolutely welcome to stay for the whole board meeting if you'd like to, but if you'd like to leave, that would be perfectly fine to leave. So thank you, guys, for coming tonight. Congratulations. We're really proud of you.
Lucy, do we have any patron comments?
No.
Okay. Then we will move on to superintendent reports.
All right. And our first one is Horner Architects. So we've got Matt McDermott here for, from Horner to give us an update on our construction project in the new elementary school.
Good evening, everybody. Okay, let's talk about.
Is this on?
Yeah. Let's talk about the new elementary school. Give you an update? Yes, no?
Did we lose our batteries? Oh, there you go. Green would help. We only work on buildings, we don't work on buildings.
So we'll give you an update on the project. So I wanted to just refamiliarize everybody with the site plan and where the building's placed. So you can see on the top is Ash Road across the top on the south end. Highway 47 is on the left.
Might press the middle button, I don't think so.
I don't think it does.
Maybe it does. Looks like it might.
Oh, it's fine. It's okay.
Yeah.
So the tan area in the center, that is your building footprint. On the right of that tan area is your future classroom addition, so there's still space for that. The gray area is all the parking and the loop road around the building. And then the long gray area heading up to Ash Road is the back busload access on and off of your site. And then once, and we'll talk a little bit about MODAT in Highway 47, once that all gets resolved, automobiles will come off of Highway 47 into the parking lots. Okay, so the tan area is the building. Here is future growth here and here. So we've got the loop going around the back, so you don't have to move that loop road to expand your building. And automobiles off 47, parking on both sides. This is a detention area for your stormwater. And then another detention area down here for the remainder of the stormwater for all of this site here. So you've got a lot of green space for fields, play areas, et cetera, for the kids. And then this is your bus loop here. Bus will come and go and come off of Ash Road. So I just kind of wanted to give you the nickel tour to refresh that. Okay, so a couple pictures, you may have seen some of these, but this was from January 29th before the wonderful snow. And they had mobilized and started. So we're looking north. You can see the water tower here. So this right here is your building pad. 47 is over here. And this was the start of the construction entrance drive coming in here where the contractors are coming and going. Neighborhood's over here. Ash Road is back here. And then this is your detention pond area back here to the left. So they had a good jump before Mother Nature hit. And then also on the 29th, just swinging around to the left where the detention pond is, they were starting to move dirt around the perimeter and get that situated. And then Mother Nature did her thing. So, all right, so we're going to jump to today with the snow-covered property. So we're going to, we're going to start looking to the south and then I'm going to swing you around right on that corner of the pivot. We're going to swing all the way around and end up looking north. Okay? So here's Ash Road. Here's the bus loop road that will become the goal, which is now the construction entrance. They've got construction gates up here. Here's going to be your retention pond here. They're storing all the materials here. The trailer will be sitting here at some point when they get that on there and set up. That'll be the job construction site trailer. So as we swing around, better view of the detention pond area, control your water before it runs off. Now you can start seeing, as we're looking on the back leg of the building pad. So you can see one classroom wing here. You can see the other classroom wing here. And they are placing, they were placing rock. You would see this is all gray rock, obviously with snow on it, you can't tell that. They were starting to put the building pad in and we have, you may have heard, what's called settlement plates. So they're sitting, first thing they do when they excavate down that five feet, they put a settlement plate. It's a pipe set on the plate. So as they fill the site with rock, it loads the site. So what we're looking for is compaction of the virgin soil down below this. And they will monitor that once a week, check the elevation of that. And as we go forward, if it settles a quarter of an inch, half inch, we'll keep watching that. What we want to have happen is two to three weeks of no movement on that elevation. And then they can start putting footings and foundations in, okay? So swinging more around to the north, you can see there's your water tower in the back. So now classroom wing here, here's your gym, the cutout there lining around here for your gym. So they didn't really get over to the classroom side here, but they did get a good jump on the rest of the work. And then swinging around back more, just looking up at 47 up here. So you can see where they're at and their, Mother Nature kind of gave a little hiccup, but that's okay. It's January, February, that's what, that's what happens. So, all right, so just to kind of walk through some dates so everybody understands the contract schedule. So bids were due in September. We started the project October 7th. We were here with you on October 10th and awarded the project. Construction started November 4th. And what that means is it doesn't mean a shovel went into the ground. It means shop drawings started. We started reviewing with the contractor, the whole process. They can't just go out there and put a shovel in the ground until we get materials and products ordered, get them delivered. Rock, even the rock has to go to the core. We have to get tests on the rock, check the moisture content. So I just wanted to, you know, walk you through some dates here. So so you're aware of how this whole thing. We had signed contracts in December to get them the official paperwork. And the completion date, substantial completion and final completion, you can see the two dates, is November of 26th and December of 26th, okay? So they pretty much had two years in today's crazy world of materials and costs and the lack of labor. This elementary school size really can be built when, before COVID was basically a 13-month project. But nobody stocks anything anymore. It takes 60 weeks to get electrical gear. I mean, it's just kind of crazy. So that's why the long schedule is there. And they will beat that, but that's just the protection we put out there for you and your district. So what's happening now, pending the weather, we do bi-weekly construction meetings and they give us a three-week outlook. So I just pointed out a few things at the top there. So they're going to continue with the building pad once Mother Nature and snow and everything starts to cooperate. Next week does not look good, so don't expect to see a lot with the temperatures. But hopefully after that, we get into the middle of February and get going. They'll continue monitoring the settlement plates. They'll start the site utility work. We did get approval from DNR for the water line, so they can start working on that. And we have a permit now for Ross to start doing the retaining wall. So those activities will start pending Mother Nature. And then the second group there, continued coordination. We're continuing with the city on the building permit. I had communications with them today. They had one final thing that it was just missed on, on the link. You have so many files that you sent, it just got lost in the link, so I resent some structural calculations. Not a big deal. They're looking at those promptly, so I foresee that happening here, even probably by the middle of next week, getting that resolved. We'll continue with Ameren Ue on the pole relocation along Ash Road. Ameren Gas is working on easements and property right-of-ways to get the gas line to your site. And then we'll continue with MODAT for the traffic signal and all the road improvements on Ash Road. So those four items are key as we keep moving along here. So their current schedule, the contractor has, as of today, is their completion is in September. So they are three to four months ahead of schedule, which is wonderful news. But I put that up there and, you know, I hate to do that, but I need to just say pending the weather, because we could lose a month, we could lose all of February, it just depends on where the weather goes. So that's a quick walkthrough of the project. I can answer any specific questions or anything else you'd like to see, because I think I'll be here quarterly giving you an update, which I'm happy to do, and I can come more than that if it's necessary. Give you pictures like that, give you updates on the schedule, so you're informed. It's good that you're informed, because I'm sure you're being asked by the community what's going on. So let us know. And send anything to Dr. Bling Smith that you want to clarify and we'll get you, get you answers. So anything.
Fantastic. Yes. Very much appreciate you coming in. You said that they are working on getting the settlement plates. Have they already gotten the five feet of digs, so that the settlement plates are in place now?
Yes. So you had to clarify that. So they have excavated down five feet.
Okay.
Put the settlement plates down and they're about, I don't know, 18 to 20 inches up with rock.
Okay.
And then get snow, so.
Okay. And then does the weather, I know we're sweet Missouri and we're frosting and thawing nonstop. Does that delay us in those two to three week? You've mentioned that you don't want to see it move for two to three weeks at all.
Yeah.
Does it make it harder starting in the winter to get that kind of quicker?
No, good question. No, it does not. It's loaded, it's still settling, because you're below the frost line on that five feet, so it'll still be compacting.
Yeah.
So, yeah. If we were doing something where we were the top foot or something, then I'd be concerned. But you're below that frost line. Frost line's 30 inches for this area, so you're in good shape.
Nice clay. Perfect.
Yes, gotta love that.
Love seeing the pictures, love all the information, so thank you so much for.
You're very welcome.
Showing us everything.
Happy to do it. As long as you're informed, that's what helps.
Anybody else have anything for Matt? Thank you so much.
You're very welcome.
I told you they were excited. I didn't mean to put pressure on you. It was just I knew they were excited to see that and hear from you and appreciate you coming very much.
Happy to do it.
And just as a words, Frankie sits in all the construction meetings and up there and says, well, it's a pretty good team. Let's keep an eye on it. Yeah, Matt's done a great job at GS and so far. So far, so far so good.
Thank you. Have a great night.
Thank you.
Well, we just got to talking about our future facilities. We thought we should talk about our current facilities. So we've got John Chandler, our director of maintenance, to give us an update on facilities.
Now there's pressure. Sorry, John.
Okay. Good evening. Facilities department consists of maintenance grounds and custodial departments. Its purpose is to provide a clean, attractive, well-maintained district for all students and staff to excel and be safe in. Proposed goals and action steps for the maintenance department. Maintain procedures in, hold on, hold on one second. Got some in my glasses. Maintain procedures to ensure safety and security for the spaces. The replacement of roof A, 3A, 13 and 4 at the high school at a cost of $32,900. The replacement of additional door units at the cool complex at a cost of $13,000 per set. There's three total. Continue to evaluate and implement measures that will help reduce energy consumption and reduce district costs. This will include monitoring, running trend lines on HPC equipment, as well as adding LED lighting through ammo rebates. Replacement of the water source heat pumps and console units at the Blackhawk Middle School AB loop. That's at a cost of $1,700,000. Same refinish to Daniel Boone Gym at a cost of $32,000. Complete the fencing against Ash Meadow, Ashwell Meadows and the new Daniel Boone property at a cost of $43,270. And actually that is completed now. Hire and maintain quality staff members with specific job skills. Promote ongoing training and align with industry standards. Complete capital improvement projects on schedule and within budget. Follow the preventive maintenance plan for all district equipment. And continue to update a five-year project plan for the upcoming large-scale projects. Custodial department, proposed goals and action step is continue to provide training to new and current staff members that they will follow procedures and processes. Hire and maintain quality staff members. Continue to ensure that all staff members and current staff members are maintaining and providing a safe and, gosh, darn. It's terrible. Providing a safe and clean environment for all our students, staff and community. Rotate custodial equipment on a five-year basis. The grounds department, making steps, or proposed goals and making steps, or proposed goals and action steps, excuse me. Continue to, continue working on beautification of the district. Hire additional staff to help with grounds, field activities, setups and salting during winter months. Maintain all field sprinkler systems and retention ponds. Program data results. Currently, we've completed 1,254 workers this year. On average, we've completed 1,126 over five-year period. Completed areas. Three roofs were replaced at the high school at a cost of $99,000. Warrior Ridge, Warrior Ridge single roof replacement at a cost of $294,000. We had $100,000 credit from the insurance company on that job. Four sets of exterior doors replaced in the district at a cost of $52,600. Warrior Ridge gym floor refishing at a cost of $25,000. Removal carpet at the high school cafe replaced with epoxy floor finish at a cost of $43,000. Removal of the carpet in the high school library replaced with epoxy floor finish at a cost of $33,000. Daniel Boone sewer line repaired at a cost of $49,950. Renovation of the high school greenhouse at a cost of $289,000. And the safety film was installed at the lower casement windows district-wide at a cost of $229,456. This is through a safety grant through the state of Missouri. With that, this is the overview of the responsibilities of maintenance custodial and grounds department, if there's any questions.
I have a question. As we just heard about our new building happening and you're talking about the fencing going on. And I know we have one groundskeeper currently and you were listing, and I know in your PDF you're talking about all of the different staff. Like, how do you see our staff needing to grow in 2026, 2027 and 2028? Because we're not just like getting a new building. I know our teaching staff's going to be similar because those teachers are moving. But how do you, how do you foresee a need possibly being there for?
Well, what we do currently, we have one maintenance person dedicated for each school. And so we would like to obviously get another maintenance person for that job over there. Another thing, Mark, our only grounds guy, is stretch's extremely thin. And you know, now mind you, we do subcontract out our grass cutting, but we still do all our fields and sprinklers. Like I said, everything else is on us. And just that simple drive of two miles down the road costs us time. I strongly recommend that we, we get another grounds guy, you know, for that, you know, for all the other stuff we have going right now. Obviously, we'll get three custodians, three custodians at the, about 25,000 square foot is what they actually look for around there. We'll kind of just judge and see how it's going to look, two to three at the very most. Obviously, there's going to be day custodian there.
Thank you.
Is the greenhouse finished?
It's supposed to be finished this week.
Okay.
That's all I can tell you.
There's one more day.
Yep, there's one more day. We're going to do a inspection next week. We did a quick inspection earlier this week and sent out a number of areas that we wanted to see completed to the school's recommendations. And so we're going to see what they do and then we're going to go from there.
That's been a frustration, I'm sure for you as well.
It's a long process, but I mean, when it's all said and done, I mean, Diane, Ms. Mierhoff is going to have a very nice facility with a lot of stuff that she's always wanted, which will help the students get, you know, get better stuff in their FFA stuff.
Mr. Chandler, I just want to say that I appreciate your creative solutions whenever we need them. So thank you so much for coming up with good solutions and keeping all things in mind.
Well, thank you very much.
Anybody else have anything for John? Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, John.
All right. Early childhood and parents as teachers.
Yes, Angel Johnson's here to talk to us about what's going on at Hopewell.
Well, thank you for letting me come in and share a little bit about Hopewell. I'm just going to talk about who we are, how much we've grown, our strengths and how we engage with our community and how thankful we are. First of all, we tried, we tried very hard to follow up with Warren County R3 mission and our early childhood vision to create a safe and positive and nurturing environment for our littles. They're, we're their first experience for school for many of the, for all of our kids. And we want them to know that it's a great place to be, to be a We Warrior and to have a love for learning started off from the very beginning. Student growth, our students this year, they have just amazed me. They've grown, we've had so much growth, especially with our IEP students the first semester and even our peer model students. The compassion they have for the students with special needs is absolutely heartwarming. We have very high expectations and it shows because our students, you put that bar high, they reach for it and go beyond it. It's pretty cool. Our program growth, student enrollment is up from this time last year. We have 77 students enrolled currently. We have added more stuff to our outdoor playground, our outdoor classroom, sorry. If you haven't looked out there, we've added a lot more things over there. If you haven't looked out there, we've added a lot more things over the summer. Let's see. Our waiting list, we whittled that down at the beginning of the year. It's grown back again, unfortunately. But we did put a really big dent in it to start. Until we get to move to Daniel Boone's building, I think that waiting list is just gonna hang out there, unfortunately. But we've seen a lot of student growth over the year and we're very proud of our kids. One of our strengths, many of our strengths is we have a kind and loving environment. Our kids are excited to be in school. The first day after the extended snow break, kids were super excited and then crying. They didn't wanna go home.
Oh.
So, I gave great kudos to my staff for that. We have high student expectations for sure. Even our IEP students that have struggles and difficulties, we know that they can do more than they think they can, so we try to help them get to that point. We're committed and compassionate staff. Our, our staff is so determined to get to know each of their students, that's where the growth comes from, because we know how to reach each one of them. And we're excited for the future because we get to go from six classrooms to twenty-one classrooms. My, I just can't wait. I'm so excited. I have all kinds of points in my head already. Dr. K and I have talked about a few of them. Our community, we love being part of the parade each year. We visit Pumpkin Patch. We do Pumpkins Galore one year, Roosters the other year, on and on. We partnered with Element Church to hold our movie night. That was amazing, absolutely amazing. The kids just were on all of the big screens, because a lot of our special needs kids, they don't go to the movies. It's expensive and then you can't make it through the whole movie. It's, it's really hard to put that money towards an outing when you can't make it through the whole movie. They, they sure made it through a whole movie there. It was, it was pretty cool. And Element Church has been very supportive. They're willing to share their facility with us. They support my staff. They've been wonderful. Gratitude, I say this a lot, I'm very proud of my staff. The middle picture is one of our elementary teachers. Their daughter comes through our school. We get a lot of parent comments on how much they can tell we love their kids. So we look forward to making a positive impact on the kids every day. There's just some of our little nuggets that are gonna be growing. And that's it. Do you have any questions for me?
We're also very excited for you, especially.
Yeah, we're looking forward to that.
Yeah, the possibilities are just endless once we get over it.
Good job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for sharing.
All right. I guess next is our discipline update. That's you, Dr. Ross, right?
Right. And we typically do a full discipline breakdown once a year. This isn't this. It's just, you know, had a little chatter online and asked Dr. Ross to talk, just a quick update on what's going on in discipline lines right now.
Sure. So, and again, this is gonna be kind of geared towards, you know, again, the, you know, the online chatter that kind of brought this whole thing up. You know, everything when we're talking about things like bullying and things of that nature, it's very nuanced. And so I might be taking a, a little bit of a left turn here to get you all the way to the numbers, so if you'll just bear with me. You know, when it comes to addressing concerns, our principals really have four major sources that they get information from in order to start tracking things down. They have the ability of students to come directly to them and report it, at which point they fill out student statements. Once we have those student statements, we are obligated by Missouri law to, you know, investigate those things. But then it's start investigation within a certain timeline, conclude the investigation within a certain timeline. So those student statements are that, are the genesis of that process. We have ARC software, so if anything comes across through a student account, whether it is through their email or through something they're typing on a Google Doc or something like that, that is, has anything to do concerns with fighting, bullying, even suicidal ideations or profanity even, all those sorts of things that automatically generates an alert that our principals and counselors receive. And then we have Spree Dia, which is our anonymous bully hotline. Students can use any browser to enter information and then that, that sends an automatic report to all principals and counselors as well. From there, like the process is, once that concern hits a principal's desk, they investigate. You know, they assign any discipline that's required in accordance with policy. Preventative measures are put in place and then parents are contacted. And I think it's important to talk a little bit about volume about this, just to understand the job that our principals do. I know things kind of originated with Blackhawk, so I, I'm kind of pointing them out in particular, but again, just to highlight like the scope of their job. So, so far this school year, there've been eighty-five school days. Okay, in that eighty-five school days, they've had a hundred-and-eighty-two student concerns brought directly to them. They've gotten over sixteen-hundred-and-seventy ARC alerts that they've had to address and then contact parents. Twenty-six bully hotline reports have come in. And then these three administrators have taken seven-hundred-and-fifty-five student statements, which then require follow-up and communication with parents. I mean, we're not even talking, we haven't gotten to like learning yet, you know what I mean? Like, this is just the breadth of what they are doing to address concerns that students have. And you know, and I know that at the end of the day, you know, parents and students like, I, I tell our new staff every year at our new staff orientation, I'm like, you know, we are, we are assessed three thousand times every day when those students come home and parents are like, how was your day today? And, you know, in that moment when you hear, oh, I had a tough day. This kid bothered me, you know what I mean? Like, I know what that's like as a parent, you know what I mean? And so, and I know the general, the feelings that that generates. So, once that, once that happens in terms of discipline, and again, I'm kind of taking this wide swath to get around to this because to call something bullying is a very specific definition and policy. So, two things that are specific, so I'm just reading from the policy, the definition of bullying is intimidation, unwanted aggressive behavior or harassment that is repetitive or substantially likely to be repeated and causes a reasonable student to fear for their physical safety. Okay, so those two burdens become then, you know, what we need to meet in order for bullying. Now, before that, to take a step back, we have different types of harassment. Now, based upon what happens, things might go straight to a sexual harassment referral. Things might go straight into a racial harassment referral. Or if they don't follow that, then they can go into, there is a general harassment discipline code available there. And that's any, the definition of that, and I'm paraphrasing this, this is not everything that's said in policy, but any form of conduct aimed to create an intimidating or hostile environment. Okay, so before that, we have codes, so like, no one causes them this except me, but like, like the bullying precursor behaviors, if you will. So abusive language is a discipline code, you know, if something is said that is mean. There is intimidation and threats if a threat is made. And then physical aggression, you know, if those threats turn then to something physical. And so this creates a sort of cascade where you have, you know, things that are said or a threat that's made. Then once that happens more than once, or if we get other people involved, then that becomes harassment. Okay, and then at that point, if it continues, now we're in the bullying land. Okay, so just to give you an idea of that, because when I get to these numbers, like the numbers for bullying are very low, but that's because we have to work through that crescendo or that cascade. So with that all being said, just getting to the numbers. When it comes to bullying over the past three years, when we take a look at the beginning of the school year through the end of January, just make sure we're apples to apples, we're staying right at the same number. You know, three years ago was fifteen, or two years ago was fifteen. Last year there was thirteen and this time this year we have fourteen referrals for bullying. Same sort of thing with harassment. Two years ago, there were twelve at this time. Last year there was thirteen. This year there is sixteen. We do, there is a, in the precursor behaviors, we have one success story and we have one area of concern. The success story is abusive language. Two years ago, you know, during, at this time of the school year, we had a hundred-and-ninety-four referrals. This is district-wide, not just Blackhawk or any of those, district-wide. We had a hundred-and-ninety-four referrals for ICOM. Last year, one-fifty-five. This year, one-eighteen. So we're seeing progressive improvement in that regard. The one that, you know, not necessarily going the other way, but you know, obviously something we wanna work on. The physical aggression part of it, two years ago, one-fifty-eight. Last year, one-eighty. And then this year, one-eighty-six. I can tell you that like, this has been a focus for, for our buildings this year. And to be very truthful, the majority of those are coming from our elementary schools. Just because any sort of physical thing automatically trips into that. So, that, that's where we're at with this, kind of how we're trending and the kinds of things that are important. You know, when we're talking about that. And pending your questions, I wasn't sure exactly what you wanted to hear, so I wanted to give that sort of context and the numbers as they are right now.
I think it helps us when we've heard some things recently from the community, whether in person or online or whatever, to just kind of refresh our memory about what, what the different steps are, what kinds of things are in place. It helps me because it helps me answer questions better, more intelligently if I've just heard that recently. And just, just kind of an overview. And then the numbers are good to hear too, because it helps us know what's getting better and what's maybe not and, yeah, so I appreciate you putting that together. Does anybody have any questions?
I did, oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I did have a question. You might not know this, but the data we have tonight, but is there a way, I know there is, because it's in the write-up system, but how are we track repeat offenders, so to speak? And is there a way to look at what interventions were done with students and whether that impacted their likelihood to do the same thing again?
Sure. And that, so that's constant work. So right now, we, we call them tiers, you know, tier one, two and three. And so identifying students that fall within those different tiers, which is, you know, that recidivism that you're talking about is, is a big part of the systems that our buildings are constantly working on. And I'll say that our elementaries are, you know, through PBIS and those, those sorts of things are, I guess, more concrete. You know, our secondary schools, just because PBIS is something that is more, you know, elementary geared, so to speak. And that just may be my secondary upbringing and bias showing, but like, discipline numbers are, every building's tracking those. And so students that, again, when we run into a situation where students are, you know, guilty of the same thing more than once, there are, there are tiers. So there's first offense, second offense and then subsequent. And, you know, the consequences for that get, get worse as they go. And that's something that in our CISTs and Infinite Campus, like when you pull up a student, you see that. Like, that's automatically tracked as they're entering the referrals.
Okay. And the second part of that, do we have any way that we're measuring the interventions? We try to see if that helps our numbers and bring them down in the lower.
Sure. I, so I, yes and no. You know, obviously, I think that our administrators, at the risk of speaking for them right now, they are probably more focused on those numbers on the offset, you know what I mean? Okay, so how many of these particular, especially since every building has their own targets, behaviors that they're focusing on. And so they're looking for that and then trying to, so in a backward sort of way, yes. You know, in a structured sort of way, if we had this many kids, so like a tier two intervention would be, they call it check-in, check-out. Like, are they saying how many kids are on a check-in, check-out system and how many, you know, all that? I mean, I don't know. I can't answer that.
Dr. Ross, I really appreciate you putting this together. I will say, Dr. Colleen Smith, at your discipline breakdown in November, you mentioned the discipline committee. What is that made up of?
Yep, Dr. Ross, we'll talk about that. That's coming around.
So we're, we're gonna have our meeting here in just a couple of weeks. So what, what that is, is we ask buildings to give us representatives, a staff member and administrator, and then we ask for some parent names from every building. And then we'll meet here. And so what I have done, again, because those names have already been submitted, we've already scheduled our first meeting. What I have done is I've shared our discipline policies. There's, there's three different ones, one for K-5, one through six-eight, one through nine through twelve. Give that to them. And then we will meet, and also with our numbers that we're tracking, and give them a three-year comparison of all of our discipline codes. And really just kind of open it up, you know, like what are your concerns? We talk about them as a group. And then, you know, so typically the first meeting is we, we identify, you know, concerns out of that group and then we try to identify, is there data that we need to go along with this? Because sometimes, you know, we'll get, so like, just typically hats and hoods have been a popular conversation topic. And also cell phone use has been a popular conversation topics, topics since I've started these meetings. So there's been a lot of, you know, need for data to talk about things, because people, or else you start, feelings start creating reality, which is not what we want to happen. We want reality to create feelings. And so, you know, that first meeting, we identify our RFIs, our, you know, our requests for information. And so I go and get that data, so then on the second meeting, we can review that data. And when the committee meets the second time, we look for, okay, so now that we know this information, are there any recommendations for change to policy that we wanna make to you guys, the board? And so once the committee comes to consensus on that, I bring in Dr. Colleen Smith, who brings it to a meeting for you all to discuss.
Beautiful. I had a couple more, but they may be more relevant for that committee. One would be what can parents do to help support? It sounds like there's a large burden on our administrators and our staff, but what can they do to help support, like how can they integrate? And then is there a way that the parents can see the different tier levels that you were speaking of? So that they can see, okay, well, if my kid does this, this is what's supposed to be happening.
For sure.
To make that really clear.
Yeah, and there's some, I mean, that's all in policy, you know? It is written out as first offense, second offense, subsequent. In terms of tiers, as far as like how many students are on that, you know, one through three referrals, you know, and that sort of thing. I, yeah, I don't know that that exists yet, just because, you know.
I would more so want the parents to be able to see, okay, this happened to my kid, so this should be the consequence, so that they have an understanding. And then I may have misunderstood, but the upper levels, is there a congruency from once you go to middle school? Like, this is what happens if you do this to when you go to high school, or is it kind of different?
So there are, and again, it, some, some things in policy are very explicit. So like, for example, like a bus major, you know, it'll, it'll cite some very specific things that students can do to then get a referral for a bus major. And then those consequences have very specific outcomes. So like the first time is one through three days off the bus, second time is five through ten. And I'm making these numbers up, but it's like that. Other things are not, because so much of discipline is built on contact. So like, for example, ICOM, which is abusive language, that can range anywhere from a parental contact to long-term OSS. You know, so administrators in each building build their own sort of frameworks, their, their starting places for each of those. So like, for example, when I was at the high school, when we were talking about ICOM, if the student cussed at a teacher, this was gonna be our, our pathway. If it was a student cussing at another student, this was gonna be our pathway. You know, we came to those agreeances, so because as much as we tried to talk, you know, during the day and collaborate, that's not always possible. And so we wanted to make sure, and that's how we ensure consistency. So the policy is, is available online for anybody. You can go see, okay, if someone is harassing my son, and this is the first time they've done it, like, the consequence should be somewhere in here. In terms of, you know, those things where there's a lot of gray, or at least, I don't mean gray, but just a place where those buildings need to then structure their pathways, that's up to each individual building, you know, how that's shared. I'm not, I'm not sure.
And those policies, I know for at least the middle school and the high school, aren't they in the handbook?
So I think most of them are.
I think so.
You know, the policy changes every year or two. I don't know that the whole discipline, like all, so JGR is, is the name of the policy and that's what administrators call it. It'll be like, it's in JGR. And so I don't know that all of JGR is in every handbook.
No, it's not in Blackhawk.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. And I'm glad that you shared the numbers of how many kids are using the app and just making parents aware that that's a thing, so that they can ensure that their kid is aware, so they can report if anything's coming up. so they can report if anything's coming up. I, yeah, I appreciate telling them more.
Yeah, and probably, you know, a good question is how can parents help? Another biggest thing is just, you know, reinforce being nice to each other, you know, as long as everyone's getting along. And if there is any issues to report, it's, it was a great way to do that anonymously. But most importantly, just be looking out for each other and be kind to each other. You know, when we run the numbers, ninety-eight percent of the kids are doing fine, are doing great, never had a referral, never been in trouble ever, so we've got really great kids, and most, vast majority of kids are doing a great job. But there are some kids that, uh, need some help, and we're trying to help them learn some things. And so, um, my, my message to parents is just, you know, continue to teach your kids to be nice to other kids, like, most of them are. And, uh, you know, we'll, we'll help those that, that aren't quite there yet, we'll, we'll, we'll get them there. But, uh, you know, it takes all of us working together.
And I'd like, I'd like to thank you for the presentation too. You know, the thing I'm gonna take away from this, and I'd like to reiterate to parents, because the first thing that parents say is nothing's being done. Something is being done, and that proves that we care. You know, we talk about school safety all the time, and everybody's number-one comment is the safety and security of our kids is the utmost important, from buses to violence to everything. Of course it is, that's, that's what we're here for. We can't learn if we're not safe and secure. I don't necessarily see everything on social media, but as you well know, that I have a lot of former students that trust me, and they will send me a screenshot of something that they've seen. And we don't want to say that's not important, because the message is, see something, say something. And this is their way of seeing something and saying something, and then I just pass it on to whoever needs it, if it's a necessity. You know, and as a parent, you talked about yourself feeling as a parent. I used to tell my kids all the time, you never know hurt until your kid's hurt. So, for us to sit here, you know, we don't know what that parent's gonna do, but at the same time, social media is not the answer. You know, and that's not the place that we, uh, need to air our grievances. Please, please, my message is, reach out to your principals, to your counselors, your kids' counselors and principals. They care, they love your kid, uh, and we're gonna do everything that we can to help them. So, uh, thank you for your time on this, because again, you're talking about the time of our administrators. It takes time for you to do this too, and to keep up this, and I know that it is, uh, most important to you too. And I want everyone to know that, I think the board's all on the same page. We think this is, and I've always said that, just like Dr. Kay said, ninety-eight percent of our kids, fantastic, do great things. We have a great student body here, we have great schools here. We can't let the two percent or whatever, uh, ruin it for the rest of us, because I'm gonna tell you, we have a great community, a great school. So, let's just all be positive, be kind to each other, you know, and, um, spread love. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, the, the next thing is financial.
Yep, just our, uh, standard, uh, monthly report here, just to go through that, to roll through the finances. Okay, uh, operating revenue is, uh, trending a little bit behind from last year. And, you know, that's mainly, we'll talk about this in a minute, we'll get to the graph, but mainly due to the lack of local revenue that came in, uh, for, for taxes. Operating expenses are, are up, uh, a little bit there. Uh, we had an increase in insurance, so there's a big increase on the expense side there. Which makes, so we have a little less money, a little bit more expenses, makes our fund balance drop, uh, a little bit. So, we're, we're a little bit behind on our fund balance. And so, just kind of the visual of this, uh, as we can see, uh, we, you know, in December, we had our low point, and then we got our big check in January, which is always great, uh, but, but that was a little bit less than what we were expecting. So, I'd imagine in February, we'll probably land somewhere between, uh, the green and the blue line, so, uh, that's where we'll trend. And I think we'll probably trend very similarly, we might actually even, in, in March or April, actually be a little higher than we were in those two years. But I think in the end of the year, we'll probably end up very similar to where we were the last two years. Thirty-eight, thirty-nine percent fund balance is kind of where that projection's looking like right now. Uh, just revenue-wise, local is behind, uh, like I said, there's a couple hundred thousand there we're behind. County's up a little bit, uh, state funding i- is, is up, because we've received the extra, uh, ESC, uh, the money. The federal, we actually, um, we're behind on some other special education payments that we're getting caught up on. So, we might actually be a little bit ahead in federal this year, which is really great, um, for that. So, uh, expenses, uh, you know, salaries and benefits trips, we gave raises, uh, and then purchase services are up, um, uh, for there, and then supplies as well are up slightly. So, things are trending fine, we're not in any concern for that. Capital Fund Four, we're at one-point-three million in the bank, uh, so we got our big check there. Remember, we're about six-hundred thousand, that went back up. So, we'll probably spend that down to around a million dollars, probably the end of the year is where we'll end up with that. Bond issue, uh, so, we've received in revenue nine-point-nine million, and we spent about a million, and we have about, uh, eight-point-eight left. So, that's just real quick on the finances.
Any questions for Greg on finance?
Impressive.
If not, we are...
I understood it.
At the point to do the consent agenda, I would entertain a motion.
I move the approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Jeff.
I'll second it.
Thank you, the motion's been made, seconded to approve the consent agenda as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. And our old business is the water tower bid.
Yes, uh, if you recall, um, I guess it was probably back in the fall.
Been a little bit since we talked about it, yes.
Yeah, maybe it was summertime. Uh, we had, uh, Ameren has a tower that we're, we're spending about ten thousand dollars a year to put a repeater on, and so we could have radio communication for our buses all across the county, and as we, as we travel. And we're looking for solutions to not pay that annually. So, we, uh, did some testing on the water tower by, uh, Warrior Ridge, where we were able to put a bigger antenna and, and increase some of our range, and it was successful. Now, we might have a dead spot here or there, but for the most part, it worked really well. And, uh, so we thought, boy, this is a, from a financial standpoint, it makes sense to go ahead and switch all this out and then drop the repeater at the Ameren Tower. And so, it'll take about four, maybe five years to pay back this investment, but in the long run, we're ahead. So, we recommend that we approve this contract, and I forgot to put the recommendation on there, sorry. To, and then we'll, we'll, we'll finish the Ameren Tower this, I guess it expires in September, and then we will have this summer to kind of get this updated.
Didn't it say that that was gonna increase each year too?
Each year, yeah, I think it's going to like fifteen thousand a year.
Right, right, so it's probably gonna take us less than four years to recoup what we're spending.
Yeah, and it was, I'm looking at our October, no, not October, I'm looking at our August meeting, I think. Um, it's July, I'm looking at July, I mean, yeah, I'm so, I'm just looking.
It's been a while, I forgot to type what month it was.
Um, but it was, uh, twelve thousand, seven hundred and some, so it was even more than ten, yeah.
To start, yes, yes. Is there a yearly contract that we'll have to sign with them, or is this just a one?
This is, this is mainly just hardware, um, and then they do provide some just radio services, but it'd be in line with that, but it wouldn't be a recurrent cost, this would be a new repeater on top, then new bus radios, so it's hardware mainly, it's mainly for us.
Get everything set up, so it'll all work, right?
Correct.
So, is this something for the fall? It'll be ready for the fall?
Yeah, the plan would be to go ahead and approve this now, and then start getting everything ordered, and then once school's out, they can switch it all out, um, and then over the summertime, be ready to go in the fall. Then we can cancel it and cancel the Ameren one.
Any other questions or anything to discuss, otherwise I would entertain a motion on this one bid.
What fund does this come out of?
Uh, this will be, uh, capital projects.
That's a good question.
She's full of them.
I make a motion to approve the water tower bid. Is that, is that expansion?
Radio system, it, it's not a water tower, it's a radio system that we're putting in, so...
You could just say, I've heard the contract as presented.
Yes.
I've heard the contract. The water tower conversion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the contract as presented for the radio system of that, to replace the repeater on the Ameren. Yes, it was Sarah and then Jeff, sorry. Uh, yes, Sarah and then Jeff seconded. Any further questions or comments? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. New business, first thing is the Holy Rosary Sports Co-op, or, yeah, sports.
Yep, so this is a co-op that we've had for a couple of years now with Holy Rosary, uh, seems to be going very well. Not had too many issues this year, uh, with it, so, things seem to be getting ironed out and going a lot smoother.
And all we gotta do is take a motion to renew it?
Yep, just need a motion to approve.
Unless anybody has any questions about it or concerns about it, or... I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to renew the Holy Rosary Co-op.
I'll second it.
Motion's been made, seconded to, um, renew the Holy Rosary Co-op agreement. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. E-rate is what gets us our discounts on a lot of internet and...
All the technology, and this is, uh, probably could have been in the consent agenda sort of thing, but, uh, we, we just need approval from the vendors.
It's quite detailed, I'll try to read some of them. Shouldn't be a concern. I'll move the approval of the contract as presented, contracts.
Okay, Jeff?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Ginger. Anybody have any questions or anything? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. We don't have any policy first reads again.
Oh, shoot, I'm so disappointed.
That means we're ready for celebrations. Okay, Mr. Barton?
Well, I think this was right after our last meeting, because I don't think I had anything last time, really, and, uh, so, but, uh, Ms. Jones, Mrs. Jones and Mr. Shaw, uh, I know Mr. Shaw's been doing this for several years, and the organization is called ACES Competition. I can't tell you what ACES stands for off the top of my head, uh, but they always take these groups of students to these ACES, uh, competitions. And I'm not gonna read every, every one of them, but I'm just gonna read some of the names. Jeremiah Hahn, Amelia Hucks, Wayne Petersbyer, Alice Briggs, Amelia Hucks, Charlotte Seabird, Alice Briggs, Amelia Murphy, Rhys and Art, Brooklyn Wells, Rhys and Art, Malia Hopper, Daniel Middleton. We're talking from biology to English to chemistry to mathematics to physics to computer science to engineering, all those classes I did not take. And, uh, but quite impressive, just quite impressive. I mean, we saw tonight, uh, all the all-state academic athletic kids and, uh, but, I mean, this, this, when you read some of these, and I'm sure you guys did when you saw it on the, uh, website, uh, that's really, that's really, 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 really impressive. So, congratulations to Mr. Shaw, Mrs. Jones, and those kids, and congratulations, and keep, keep making, uh, us look good. So, that's awesome, proud of you guys, that'll take you far in life.
Thanks for bringing that up.
Yeah, it's awesome.
Does anybody else have anything?
I do not.
Okay. Um, we're going to have a workshop on February twenty-seventh, talk about our photography contract. And we may have some personnel or something.
Yeah, I'd like to talk, I'm sure we'll have personnel and then negotiations, just maybe get that approved as well.
Negotiations are added to that.
Knock out a couple things there.
Report from negotiations, okay? Anybody have anything else we need to add there? I think that'll be good, and we'll meet at five, like usual. It works, okay? Then I would entertain a motion to set the next regular meeting.
I make a motion to set the next Board of Education meeting for March thirteenth, twenty-twenty-five.
I'll second it.
Okay, thank you, Sarah and Jeff. The motion's been made, seconded to set the next regular Board of Education meeting for March thirteenth, twenty-twenty-five. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay. And we need a closed session.
I make a motion to set the next closed session to immediately proceed the regular March thirteenth, twenty-twenty-five meeting.
Listen. Thank you, Sarah and Deanna. Motion's been made to set the next closed session to immediately proceed the regular March thirteenth meeting. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Who's gonna adjourn?
So moved.
I'll second it.
Don't fight over it, kids. Carolyn got it, okay. Rich made the motion, Carolyn seconded. All those in favor adjournment, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay. Thank you, we are adjourned, thanks, everybody.
All right, so I got a great idea.
Don't, don't...